There you go. How you doing today, Brad? Good? You in there?
I'm good. I'm like everybody else, you can play with something too. I'm okay.
There's something going through.
The last wave.
The first looking many, I don't know.
Hi, Allison.
Our four year old was having an out of body experience yesterday, but when I came home. By by the block, he was like, hey, how you doing? A nap and.
Yeah. Where? It's water. If someone messes me up. Make sure that. Hey, JoJo.
Hey.
How are you?
Good.
How'd you do on Saturday?
Good, um, I got um, top ten for uh, fastest runners and uh. And three mile for Quincy, so, yeah.
We're a sport, man.
Cool, why don't you, why don't your steward report?
Alright, so all this meeting in order. Starting what it is. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And the United Republic which stands as one nation under God, equal to all. Right, everybody's received copy of the agenda tonight, are there any proposed changes or amendments? If there's no amendments, we'll take a motion to accept the agenda.
I motion to accept the agenda.
I second that.
Right, first a second, I'll take a vote to approve. Or adopt the agenda, excuse me.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, is there any public comments at any?
No, there's none.
Okay, next, uh, was the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And then there any questions on the consent agenda?
I might rather answer.
Okay. Alright, uh, all those in favor of the, of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then we're on to reports. Mr. Burton?
Yeah.
Doctor, excuse me.
Mister, Mister. Alright, so uh. Some exciting things are happening at Quincy School this week, uh, starting Thursday and Friday. We have a film crew from Microsoft coming to film uh, our AI integration at Quincy High School. And the things that I'm most excited about is the way our CTE teachers are using artificial intelligence um, to plan and design their lessons. Uh, and to adapt their lessons, because especially a lot of our CTE programs, there's not necessarily a set curricula per se, just because it is so job. Um, well tied to industry, it's industry standard, so they're using AI and do that, and then also highlighting some of the ways that our students are AI. So for example, we have a student in Rangeland that is using AI to, I uh, help her identify flowers. Um, and then some of the range competitions, it's helping her uh, develop a rubric uh, for the competition, just for herself, for a self evaluation. So, uh, it's really neat and I'm just, I'm really proud that it's being highlighted in our current technical educational spaces, because it, it, they're really making it industry straight, which is where we're headed for AI. Uh, TTKs are transitioned to kindergarten starts uh, on Thursday, right? We're bringing in forty eight preschool students, we're really excited about that, at Pioneer Mountain View Monument. Um, full sections that we have, students on the waiting list even for those sessions as well. Um, you know, with the legislation coming up, you know, I'm gonna continue to advocate for the expansion of TTK programs, particularly in places where there's child. Uh, preschool daycare or take care, preschool deserts such as Georgia especially, um, I think that's the next area that, that makes the most sense to expand. Um, but we're really happy that we were able to keep the three, so we're very thankful for them, uh, because they were up there for a while. Um, we are continuing to add enrollment, uh, so in our next enrollment report, you'll see above forty eight students, above forty eight is because the TTK students are counted. Um, but I spoke with our mentor today, we're continuing to register even more kids, uh, even when school started, so that's encouraging. Um, and then today we had a all, three hour, all district uh, admin training on uh, the, some of the discipline. Rules and procedures that have changed, just to make sure that our, our admin are up to speed, it's highly complex, uh. Three hour training with our attorney, uh, making sure that we're following the law, uh, is that exactly as it's written. Um, and then in addition to the training, there's also about a sixty page uh, handbook. That goes along with our, our administrators' reference, uh, when they are in the ship, in the ministry discipline, so it's a very complex um. Policy procedure that we're talking about tonight, uh, that we're trained up, ready to go.
Good to you.
That's all I have, any questions for me?
Alright, welcome to the student report. First of all, welcome guys, first meeting, good to have you.
Um, so for sports, there is a soccer game tonight at six, and then a volleyball game also at six thirty, I think. And then across country has a homie on the twenty fifth, down by Preservators, and you guys have time, go and support them. And um, yesterday they had student council to announce um, Hoco, I guess, when, when it is and all that, the. Hoco for this, the Hoco thing for this year is casino night. And they are doing setup, so if you need community or school hours, you can go down there on the seventeenth and the eighteenth. And then tomorrow they are also having the movie night, it's Cars, I think, and then it's five dollars to get in, and then you also get Top Running Liberty. And then I think FCC LA Southern Candy as well. And that's all I have, very much.
Um, also on Tuesday, I think we'll have a, or no, sorry, um, on Saturday, we'll have a, a crossing street meet as well, so the like, uh, cross and street meet. Yeah, uh, I don't know where it is, uh, but um, where else have you gone on Saturday?
Did JoJo, did, did Ole Andre break the school record on Saturday? Did I see that correctly, that Ole Andre, I read that broke the school record?
Yeah, yeah. He, he, he broke a lot of school records. I mean, he's, he's already broken the score for the two mile and for the three miles, so I'm not, I'm not surprised that he's, he's really good, so. He's, he's a really fast runner, so, yeah.
You guys are a fast team, too.
Yeah, for sure.
Awesome, grateful. Uh, board leadership report, I'll just say, I, I was able to call a couple people and follow up, but not everybody, since I started the conversation um, on, during the board leadership meeting this coming week. We are gonna talk about the um, the district policy about um, personal expression. Um, I asked Shannon and Dan if they had any, any input they wanted to share, the policy has been emailed to all of us, but Casey and Rita, if you guys have anything you want us to talk about.
Hi.
For, for the meeting.
Sorry, I. Responded to Nick.
No, 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 as long as, as long as one of the three of us gets it, then we'll, we'll have something to talk about. But I wanna make sure everybody knew that we were gonna come, have a conversation about that during leadership, and then we are gonna schedule an executive session with our lawyer. To have a conversation amongst the five of us, uh, in October, so just wanted to follow up on that, guys. And that, that's all I have for leadership updates.
But you haven't made any decision, that'd be accurate, like, uh.
Yeah.
I think the first promising.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, best to be proud of.
I was gonna also mention, um, we're waiting here back the legs with some WIKE ruling, uh, that would impact street uh, quarter and athletics, so we're just waiting, there's been on something just.
Well, yeah, um, there's been some guidance from WI, some my board leadership update, but our uh. For students who cast the only in soccer, um, and if they're ejected for use of profanity, this, there's a hundred dollar fine, uh, for chess or boys soccer only. Um, and then even coaches are ejected, coaches pay a hundred dollar fine. So, uh, there's been no guidance from the WI, how to collect these fines, it hasn't been, uh, there's no, there hasn't been any fines administered yet. Um, so there's, there's many challenges of, if someone abuses the paper, and wouldn't do. Um, and then we're just kinda scratching our head, why you would only single out boys soccer, um, and not all sports.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Uh, it just doesn't feel right to, to us. Yeah, over the other.
More to come as we learn more, more to come.
And then I did retreat dates, we still wanted, you know, Shannon's offered to offer her house up too, so if there's any, try to get a retreat date, another survey, follow ways, yeah.
Are we still looking at October?
Yeah.
Push back? I mean, I don't know who's the most busy in this test.
Good.
Yes, it turns.
October's going on fast, so I'm like, I gotta.
You can, you can put out some in lots of conferences in November too.
Right.
So, we can put some, I'll, I'll just select a few dates and get that out to you guys, and we'll put some November dates in there as well.
Okay, so then we're on to policy review and adoption. The first round is just first reading.
I'm really struggling with. Following all these changes, some of this language is. So redundant.
It's my first reading here.
I have one that. When they are just, I think it was in uh. All inclusive. And they're, they are trying to give us a. Explanation of all the terms, but when they're talking about it, they're, they're, they seem to be like. Race, color, and uh. International or national origin. Aren't all those the same?
They aren't, and they come out of the state defined non discrimination language, so.
Yeah.
Whenever, if there's any complaint, or if there's any um, you know, opposite civil rights complaint, uh, around discipline or special education, that's the standard that they've been used to.
Religion and creed.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's growing, uh, the, the list, and we, you know, it has to be on all our district materials, website, it's, it's, yep.
Any questions on the first readings, or should we just go?
I, I have a question on thirteenth time, just really understanding, um, related to just how we do our administrative policy adoption, those functions, um. I guess when we've had policies for review. It, it's saying that the public should have the ability to also give input, and that that never happened.
They do with the public comment section.
Is that an accurate reading of?
I think they do, orbiting through um, our public comment section of the meeting. So that's what that's.
But how does that work when you are actually trying to change your policy, I mean?
Well, it, it goes on for a first reading, it goes on for a second reading, so it's public on our.
Still they're following.
Yeah. Yeah, they're following the law.
It's posted on these site readings, that's right, yeah.
And then, you know, I think Quincy, but we can run us up further with the AI chatbot too, like, once they're, were adopted, probably you just put in any scenario and find. The policy procedure, without having to hump and pack through, you know, ten thousand pages of policy procedure.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I think that's also made it more accessible to people.
And the reason I ask, is I went to other community public, open meetings, like city councils and stuff like that, and daily. After like their agenda items have space for the public to comment, you just kind of change, we don't do that, but.
You, you could put public comment at the end, too, there are some boards that do that, it's probably to us.
So just kind of be.
A bit of structure.
I have more of a question, would you?
Yeah, that's a good question.
And then I just wanna make note of. Uh, policy two, four, two, zero, pretty awesome, but that's the info that you know of it, should the comment. Related to notifications of parents related to academic progress, isn't it?
And then we're on to second reading and adoption. We have any questions on the second readings? Fifty for all in response to stated changes, right?
Correct. And you'll probably see them again, uh, because OSBI has admitted that they've had some over, uh. Some over, they overlook some issues that are getting stemmed from long term expulsion, uh, the new rules, they, they're almost the exact same now. Um, there's really very little difference between an expulsion and a long term suspension, other than the expulsion, you can appeal to the superintendent for a full year. That's in the firearm, is a full year.
Lengthen it.
Yes, you can lengthen it, where.
But you can't in the.
Not in the long term. Um, so it's taking a little bit of flexibility away from a long term suspension, uh, so I anticipate that OSBI will probably be cleaning that up, so I, I would. I would bet you'll see these again. Yeah.
So what is considered as a long term suspension?
So anything over ten days is a long term suspension. Okay, yeah, alright.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt these calls?
We need to wait till we hear, uh.
Do you want to wait to adopt, and so even for your first correction?
No, there's gonna be for a long time.
Oh.
OSBI just said, no, we, no, it's not, the, the vast, it's not clean, but you're gonna have to sit in it until. We give you additional guidance, so they haven't said anything, um, as far as when that's gonna happen, OSBI, uh, they're, they're down about thirty. Or so staff members, so I don't think it'll be, you know, we don't long term or expel, often, um, we do expel, it generally follows within that firearm.
Aye.
Or uh, something pretty extreme where the principal puts to me for a full year.
And this is the training that your administrators just got?
Yes, yeah, so, yeah, all of it.
For a gap of quality match.
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, so I make motion to. Okay, finish that.
Adopt.
Accept them, adopt.
Adopt these policies, okay?
Mm-hmm.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any unfinished business?
I don't think so.
Let me hear if you have new business to propose tonight? Any requests for future topics? Okay, so we're into a work session, talk to our new student board reps, and one returning, our main.
You just go one at each?
If you guys wanna hang out, I know you're used to being in here longer. Please go, please make free. Thank you. Good night.
Although I heard, they were really. Well, then to, like, cover all the signatures, and then uh.
So this, this is time really just for us to kind of onboard you a little bit, uh, Lucy, you're gonna lead this work session.
Me? Why you?
Yeah, you're in charge, you're, you're supposed to, to boss these guys around and give them the shake.
Yeah, the main lady.
Okay, that's. Um.
Different leadership stuff.
Yeah, that's great, uh, so. I know you have that with Shannon, uh, yesterday, so she kind of broke it down for you a little bit, but this is our, our procedure that comes straight from our board, um. And all, and uh, we'll take some time to review it, ask you guys some, if you have any questions for the board, and uh, how we wanna work together, I think. Talk to you about the advisory vote, and how we want that to play out in meetings, you know, there's times too where advisory, or, let's say ninety eight percent of advisory vote is appropriate. Um, maybe ninety nine percent of the time, but there may be times when it might not be, depending on the situation. Uh, but we just kinda wanna talk about your comfort level, how we make sure that your voice is elevated, I know you guys have some ideas too possibly about. How you can get the, the student voices, uh, maybe in our, our elementary or middle school, so we can talk about that too. So that's some good for the board?
Yes.
Alright, Chad, you wanna kinda take it through?
Uh, we're just gonna go through the whole.
Well, and I think just the, the responsibilities.
Okay.
Well. Also something we need to look at real quick, what in that, is that the purposes number five, that we're gonna be changing. Says, they will not have the right to make motions of vote, and that should be. Cast a binding vote.
Yeah.
No, it'd be so late.
But it should somehow, it is allowed for a binding vote.
Should we just take it point blank?
Let's take one more.
Purpose?
Yeah.
Alright, let's go, yeah, just point blank.
So on, on purpose, the purpose of student board represented, representatives to the Quincy School Board of Directors. Is to service liaisons between the board and the students of Quincy School District. I, I'll just say in the past, you guys have been great about giving the high school reports, but yeah, there's ways to incorporate the other kids' federal means.
How do you guys feel, by the way, about the word liaison? Do you know what that even mean?
Yeah, it's kinda like, I don't explain it, the, the way I see it is like, kinda like connecting this, maybe.
The bridge.
Like, yeah.
Serious. Um, there will be up to three student board representatives at all times, that doesn't mean you all preview here at the same time, but we love to have you. Uh, student board representatives will provide insight and support to enhance the board's understanding of student issues and perspectives. And aid the board in recognizing efforts and impacts of policies it adopts on the students, uh, of the districts. We, you remember last year when we had the, the beginning of the year, when we had the uh, Tresco conversation?
No, uh, really, yeah, I remember hearing about it, but I wasn't in the exam, cause one of my classes at the college was like, the same time that the meeting was, so I was like, I can't, I mean.
So that's kinda when we're talking about, maybe not eighty nine percent of the votes are, are great, and one might not be great, because maybe you don't want your opinion to be heard, or you, it's inappropriate for you guys, because it's. Above all of our heads, but like, that was a great, Yoli had a lot of information to share with us, and was very upfront about it. Have you ever talked about that, that's a conversation point, or something that impacts you guys, or your friends, or anybody you know, directly? We're not living in your shoes, and we'd love to hear from you guys, how decisions we make impact you.
So, you guys are the experts at being students, I, I, my expertise expired. Around thirty years ago, so, I am, I am by no means an expert, uh, I live with some students, but I only live with four students, and we have thirty two hundred in our district, so. Um, and we really glad you guys to be the experts.
Yeah. Uh, student board reps, and for certain, board reps are served as the student bodies' voice, both the board, uh. Both to the board from the students, and from the board to the students, this should allow the board to receive credible feedback. From students at all levels across the district, and to hear input from the student perspective. Continue with the theme there, student representatives will participate in board discussion, but will not have the rights to make motions. Vote, hold board offices, or attend executive sessions, we're kind of abandoned down, and I, I hope you guys, Shannon had a conversation about that yesterday. Or at some point, like advisory votes, we'd love to have you guys share your opinion with us, when we get to something.
The policy allows for that.
Yes, we'll, we'll rewrite this. So I'm gonna rewrite this.
Number five is the one we're gonna have to make some changes on.
Yeah.
Chris, I wanna go back to Chad, how, and Chad and Dan too is, for leadership, how would you like the board reps to notify if they're not gonna be, just use that remind chain, is everyone gonna get that remind message from the students?
I don't have, I don't, I don't, I don't have the reminder.
Okay, but we can work with Jessica, get it on there, or, cause it is nice to know when we're not, when you guys aren't getting community.
Yeah, um, Mama texts us a lot of times, like, asking for, in a board, um, I'm not sure if she did today, but she did text us last week, that's.
Yeah, um, I just, I just got it over and text usually, so, but I, I.
Is texting the best for you guys?
Yeah, I mean, I mean.
I get both, it's my negotiation.
Andres, do you get the reminders?
Yeah.
Maybe we can set you up with Jessica, you know, JoJo, so you can, you can make sure you get the reminds, cause I think with the reminds, it's good, it tracks everybody's communication. Um, it's just kind of everybody's, everybody's safe.
Yeah, that's what.
Yes.
So you have a cell phone, Jeff?
Yeah, I do.
I, I need to be, so my text, I need to be added to the text.
Okay. Okay, did you get the student ones?
What?
The student board text messages, you got those? Okay, I will, I'll talk with Jessica along.
I don't think I'm opted in or anything.
Okay.
But you can.
Okay, sounds great.
Another reminder.
I mean, I don't mind being reminded, cause when a meeting's moved, that's when I arrive to the wrong spot. Don't mind.
Agreed.
Yeah. So we're saying, um, to modify number five? Okay.
You're taking this?
Yeah.
No, oh, I kind of, sure.
Like, so, we, we, we don't have the will to make votes, or?
That's what they're thinking about.
That's what they're, that's specific part.
So when we vote on, say, the, the policies like we did tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Like, that decision, whether they pass or not, that's for the, the regular board members. But what we can do is allow you an advisory vote, so we can ask for your vote first, and you guys can vote, it's not binding. Um, but allows you to have a voice, and whether or not you approve.
Yeah, that's, that sounds like a good idea, obviously.
And, and so that will be, you know, I'll make sure that you guys have your board agendas, they go, I usually send that on Fridays to everyone, and I'll make sure that you guys are included. So there comes a little bit of, you know, part of this gig comes with a little bit of homework, um, so, you know, you can read the policies and procedures, and. There is no silly question at all, there's, there's so much jargon in ed speak. Um, and a lot of these policies are RCW, or federal law, there's, they can be very complex, um, so don't be afraid to ask any question, okay?
I have a question related to like how they cast their advisory vote, cause what we're not asking them is for like a roll call. That, right, that would be a lot of pressure, so have you guys determined how to collect that unified vote?
I don't think it has to be unified.
It does, they have to, and how is it an advisory vote, so it's one vote for all three?
No, I think it's three or eleven.
Oh, okay, then I totally misheard earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's a good clarifying question, cause I didn't think about it, so.
Okay, I totally misheard.
Yeah.
I, I'm okay with that.
Sorry, what does hold board offices mean?
So they can't be.
Board president.
Oh, they will not, okay, same.
So we can modify that, uh, still keep that qualifier in there, um.
Okay. Uh, every ninety six students will report to the students of, of this school district about the work of both the district and the board.
Is that fair? Is that possible?
Yeah.
They got a lot, the district?
Do you guys feel like you?
You have tie around that?
I sometimes will talk to like teachers.
And, and leadership, are you some leadership to share this?
That there's like anything big going on, she lets them.
Okay, so you guys are on the leadership, we can.
I just, I'm the leadership, uh, I have to be with, um.
JoJo, are you on leadership?
I now, I don't really, I, I go to Kira, so I don't really know.
Oh, that's good.
Are you on ASB?
No, we don't, I don't really know what's going on with ASB or whatever, um, I, I don't know how that's going, um. It's, it's really confusing, um, last year, we were talking about it, and like. I think it might be now like, in the hold of the, um. The teachers there, I don't, I don't really remember as much.
But you guys have an opportunity to check in every day as a big picture group though, right?
Yeah.
Like every morning, you guys start out with the checking?
Yeah, it's like, yeah, we have like a morning circle, and we have questions.
So you have, you have, you have access to your peers to say.
Yeah.
How's it going, are these are the things that I'm seeing?
Yeah.
So interesting, we could work you in with Miss Me Home. Okay.
How often do you have like? How often do you have like, do they still have?
Yeah, um, we usually have somebody during like um, spring weeks and all that. But we do have, um, ASB does meet up every Monday because it's our advisory cloud. So, yeah, we do that. And then leadership is every day as well. Like right now, they're just getting ready for them coming and like doing posters for sports and.
In secret, you probably have one of one of them on Sunday month, one every other month.
Yeah, like every other one. Yeah, because we just had one like two weeks ago, I think, and the next one's probably not even.
Okay, the student board reps will represent Quincy School District students in accordance with the following qualifications. Selection procedures and responsibilities. Now it's kind of the details of what you're doing here. Uh, term of the office, you'll be selected for in spring for the following school year. Term of office will wait for one full school year beginning in September, including in June. Where you have one July meeting, one August meeting. Uh, in the event of a vacancy during the school year, a student will be selected from a qualified applicants. To serve the remaining uh term of the school year after going through the set of applicants uh and interview process. Uh, all student board reps will carry, will serve a one-year term unless the board decides to reappoint a student to a second term.
With your approval.
You've been called and told.
We have not, we've never discovered any official, we've always been away with the second term.
But it's a question, right, that you ask? Or you just.
No.
Yeah.
Did you watch it?
I mean, I would.
Because he knows a two-year term.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But it says one year.
It says one year.
That's one.
I don't know if they were doing the interview or not, but they said it was two years, yeah.
Okay, let's change.
We want you back.
Yeah. I would never have a board, that's too perfect, we haven't wanted it back, you know, so.
Yeah. So qualifications, student must be attending Quincy High School or Sperry Quincy School District and be in grade eleven or twelve during their terms. As student representative at either QHS or QIA. Uh, at least one period a day. Each student representative must be in proper academic standard equivalent to the requirement for participating athletics. Or other student activities and must maintain proper academic standing throughout his or her term. In addition, a student board representative must be capable of working effectively as a team member and exhibit good character. Student board representative must gather information regarding school events or concerns and be willing to convey them. A student opinion to the board and report forward deliberations and actions backed by student body. Uh, collection of students will become non-voting members of Quincy High School Associated Student Body, Student Council.
Why is that?
I think actually that's the piece I I want to definitely prioritize.
Yeah, so uh Andres has, because you're on student council, Liz, because you're in ASB, right? You go to big student council meetings?
Yeah, I didn't get a go yesterday because I had class in the end of eight, so I was gonna. He's late.
And Andres, I'll reach out to Missy home so she knows that that she reached out to, so you're on the student council.
Student council, um, they choose the students from their advisory classes.
Okay, but yeah, I'll I'll let her know about this procedure that Andres, as the board rep. Automatically, do you do you attend them?
Yeah, because I'm pretty busy, so we we lead them, so.
Okay, so. Um, I'll, so I guess next council meeting, you get to go and Liz, can you, I'll call Missy home so she knows.
I'll make sure.
But you can look out for her, okay, cool.
Good thing that they can't line with mine.
Yeah. Uh, the application process, let us know if any of this wasn't followed. The student will submit a student board representative application to an ASB advisor. The students must submit two reference letters, at least one from a teacher or administrator. Selected applicants will be interviewed by the QSD superintendent, at least two board members and the current student board representatives. Students should be allowed to take uh the lead in asking questions, conducting the overall interview. The interview committee will recommend representatives to the board for approval. Uh, should the board not decide not to appoint a recommended applicant, the interview team will recommend another candidate for consideration.
So we did do what letters are.
Uh, removal, the student board representatives serve in discretion at this school board. The board may remove a student representative for failure to fulfill his or her duties. Uh, for failure to maintain academic standards or for behavior that the board deemed inappropriate or unacceptable as student representatives. Or as a representative in the district.
And the how that one's played out before as a student board rep, maybe. They're failing a class or not doing well in class, they have stayed at that, like if we're going to use round table or. Uh, a WASA event to make sure that they're passing all their classes, but really go on the event, so. Passing all your classes, it's not a problem.
All right, into the meat of the subject here, responsibilities, the student representative will adhere to all. All the rules and regulations pertaining to school board members. Should we highlight some of the rules for this? This public meetings clearly apply as well.
Yep.
So anything that we say in the meeting is archived, right? We videotape all the meetings. So everything we say can be pulled up by anybody that watches the meetings, right? Um, any correspondence we have amongst all of us is subject to public records of us and you guys would be subject to, right? Since you're students, you should be sure that.
Depending, it doesn't lead, it doesn't, well.
If you send a text to all of us, that's not good.
Yeah.
If you send an email to all of us, that's not good.
That's why we use our mind.
Right, so I think that's where it applies, but I mean, you three can talk. You you can talk to two of us at any time, but us three, we joke, you three, that's not.
Yeah.
Or if three board members like, hey, we really want to hear about like. Um, you know, we want to paint the school buses, great, we, three of us want to hear what you have to say about Korean school buses. And but that's outside the meeting. And I, we don't expect you, this this is not on you guys, you're you're the students, you're not supposed to say. Uh, sorry, board members, we can't do that, but that's kind of what that, that's what that is and they they're all really good. Our board does a really good job of following that, but again, sometimes it's, texting is so convenient and you guys are used to texting with all your friends or. Do you, but you guys don't text me, you guys Snapchat, no one texts. Yeah. Okay, well, there you go. Um, so. Uh, it's it's sometimes really convenient to include all the board members, but we can't have all five or three in a conversation stream.
Uh, attend all regular and and we should say all of us are available. If you have any questions about any of it, I mean, Shannon is basically, is all the questions.
Kind of take that.
Yeah, so if you have any questions, start with Shannon, then if she can't answer it by all means, like Nick and the rest of us are here to support you guys.
Also, the rules is not speaking for the board.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
It can't span.
So if someone, if someone were to. You know, say, oh, we want to paint the school bus screen, you say, you come to them and instead of saying, well, my opinion would be to be, you say, yeah, the board wants to do it. You can't do that, right? See, you can't speak for the group, you can only speak for yourself and you have to make sure you clarify that when you speak.
And then usually I just encourage them, if they have a strong opinion to come public. I would redirect your energy.
Uh, we ask you to attend all regularly scheduled board meetings which occur while school is in session, since regular board meetings occur during the evening hours. Of a school night, the Quincy School Board may grant permission for a student representative to leave the meeting. Uh, before the conclusion of, if the student board report has been given. Regular board meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, either in the boardroom, the at the district office or at Quincy. So in this Quincy school building. But advanced scheduling in the event, uh, after meeting meetings teams will be, will obtain apparent guardian permission slip. To uh miss school during that time. So we ask as representatives that you come to our meetings. Uh, dress appropriately for board meetings, adhere to professional standards for attire and grooming. Um, attend special meetings and or student sessions if requested, excluding executive sessions. So unfortunately, things we talk about in the executive session are are, can we say it, private?
Yeah, they're they're protected under state law, that that they can only be discussed at that time and they're usually subjects. That have legal ramifications and we don't want our students to be caught up in there.
Uh, attend special meetings of or student sessions if requested, excluding executive sessions. That review the board packet and reading material prior to all regular board meetings in representation. So effectively participate, it's like we said, we want you guys to have an advisory vote and learn to. Vote effectively, right? Or ask questions that maybe we hadn't thought of, best if you reviewed the material already. I know it, it can be a lot.
So wait, when do we, so we we get the agenda for the meeting?
Yeah, I'll give it to you on Friday, okay, and then you'll have it over the weekend and Monday to review it. I know you guys are very busy with lots of things going on, so um. You know, just do your best. I don't expect some of those contracts are really confusing. I don't expect you to understand or. Or read every line item by line item on some of those those, especially the contracts, but the policies can be confusing. But I think if you have any questions at all, like what does this mean? What does this sentence mean? And uh, you know me or you know or leadership, Shan, or actually, yeah, go through Shannon. Yeah, I think that's the easiest way to do it, um, and then he'll help you. So, like, you know, I always address questions to the board too. That's more for you guys.
Uh, suspended discussions at regular open meetings, the board will implement all. This can be accomplished through active listening, voicing opinions, asking for clarification, or other appropriate methods, however, the student board representative. Student representative may not take any motions or vote. That's that's another one, oh, here we go. Student may participate with the board in advisory votes on agenda items as follows. Immediately before the vote, the board votes on an agenda item, the student board representative will be required to add their advisory vote, whether pro con or abstaining. So we need to work on the apparatus for maybe, should we ask guys for that advisory vote before we vote anything? Uh, provide reports to the board during the agenda, uh, item entitled student board report, which you guys did great tonight. The report will include information on student activities as well as other topics that concern. But the student council uh may choose to appraise the board of. Refine from committing the the school board. The school student council to any position or action that is uh not previously been approved by the ASB. So similarly, like Casey was saying about committing the board to something, don't commit your peers to anything that you guys may not have voted on. With that.
Apprise. And seven, may choose to surprise.
And inform, may choose to inform, update, sort for, you could, this would update.
Yeah.
Which I think I might because.
Old English term.
Right.
Perfect. Um, report board deliberations and actions to student councils applicable. And uh, Quincy School District students in general, inappropriate student board representatives will close with the ASB to address. Any issues or concerns in an effort to improve school conditions. Fulfilling this requirement necessitates that a student representative will actively get involved in student life and be able to gather information on school activities.
I'm gonna ask, is it free for them to go to student life activities?
Uh, depending on the activity, um. I would say for the majority of all activities, you guys get in for free, correct? With the exception of a lot.
No, um, like games, like football games and all that, you get it for free if you have ASB.
Right.
But.
If you don't have your ASB card, you don't.
Get paid, yeah, and then like moving nights and all that, it's usually like only if you're helping. But anything else.
I believe isn't, I have to check on the ASB thing, I think if you have a hardship, we can weigh the ASB fee fee. I believe, and that's simply the dances to get the dance.
Yeah, that's.
Is that correct?
Yeah, if you have ASB, you can get into the dance.
But I know if you have a financial hardship, you can go to the office and.
Yeah, they they like.
And they let you in.
I think it's like the the free lunch thing that they do.
Yeah.
They.
They do qualify for free.
Yeah.
You can get an ASB card for free and then you can get the dances for free as well. I think the little thing, like the little club fundraisers, like.
Like conquering.
So you can do that now? I didn't know you can do that.
Yeah, if you put ASB, you don't have to pay for the ticket.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay. That's interesting, I didn't know that. I honestly didn't know that. I I paid for like all the dances I went to, so.
I think you should ask, ask when you're getting booked.
Okay.
Well, no pressure on the next one, but orient new student board representatives.
Lose.
Like, it's already begun.
Yeah.
Learning.
You're doing a great job.
Yeah.
I try, I try.
Uh, participate in board training sessions, including out of town professional development when invited, student board reps may also participate in other board events or visits when appropriate. The IE school visits, um, when these sessions or activities occur during school day. You will um follow the established pre-arranged absence procedure from the high school. So that would apply to like the Loser Conference in November, if you guys want to come, or you're able to come, you're more than welcome to. Because there's a whole, if you're not hanging out with us the whole time, there's a whole, the whole student.
Yeah.
Involved in part.
Involved has rooms reserved for everybody for that event, for Loser in November. For kicking around what we want to do, we go to uh, uh, well, it used to be Olympia, but it's not Olympia anymore. We go to C-TAC and the ledge conference and it just didn't. You don't really get to connect with anybody and it was fun bringing the kids to Olympia and being able to see the legislative process in action. Um, and join us, you're you're uh, you know, the ledge pro, testify, you know all about it, but. You know, she and I were talking about today, um, it's part of the ledge role, maybe her and another board member and the student reps. Connect, schedule a time with Alex and Judy and Tom to visit, connect with them and then go to the national capital. So instead of going to ledge conference.
Right, and then communication between student board reps and board members, student representatives should not contact board members via email or other district or peer communication platforms. Such as remind, unless instant feedback or clarification is needed. There should be uh more than one adult, including any electronic communication with students as they occur in professional boundaries. So I guess we need to establish that that's you and you.
Yeah. And then we'll uh, I'll talk to Jessica about when people, everyone, right, too, so we're on some page.
I I wanted to ask, uh, that's kind of like different from this, but I wanted to ask about this, um, interest. The, I don't, what what is it like about?
So that's what, yeah, so what what we do, what we've been doing the last year, uh, last year, we've been working on a common definition of what. Post-secondary success looks like, because it doesn't mean just college, it can be career, it could be trade school, um. And we have all the different state agencies, OSPI, WASA, WASA, um, higher ed, we have. Have state college uh uh representatives, private college representatives, and everybody has their own definition. So this last year, we arrived on our own common definition. Then we're trying to identify what are supports that are keeping kids from being successful once they get there. So we spent all the time talking to the past graduates, there was three Quincy graduates that participated. And what are some of those barriers that kiddos had to be successful in college or a trade school? And then this year, the focus could be on parents, so as parents, what were some of those barriers of getting your kids successful? So it's really important to have the students there, because you provide that insight of what you're experiencing in high school now. Does that match up to the supports that we're offering or the supports you need and your families need for you to be successful? What's your D high school? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. This is year three, so you're coming into, they'll want to take you guys as that, as members too.
Okay.
Awesome. And there's a, there's what, probably twenty students there? Yeah, so you can have other students from other districts too. Yeah.
Students, student representatives must remain polite and professionally respectful while electronically communicating with board members. So no cussing us out over text. Uh, student representatives must utilize electronic communications strictly about appropriate business and must avoid asking personal questions, communicating via electronic device only when necessary. That's it. So we got some edits to make.
Do you guys have any questions?
Any other, any questions for us?
Liz, you're the senior board, what's the words of wisdom that you have for these these two newbies?
Just have fun, don't be scared to see what you think. About everything you have put in the effort.
Thank you, Chance, you get lots of fun.
Oh, no, um, we actually wanted to talk to you guys about going to the schools, like the long entry schools and all that. Because we just heard from Shannon, because we didn't even know that they also have like student councils. And we want to like talk to them, see how they're doing like during school and like, if they're having. And we wanna like talk to them, see how they're doing like during school and like if they're having any issues at the elementary schools and the schools.
Sure.
Um. I I can email like the principals and all that. I just need their.
So I think that'd be great. And then the principals. Um the meeting tomorrow, actually, or Thursday altogether. I can ask this, uh and it's a Zoom meeting. So um it'd be really cool cuz you can meet with them and and kind of identify some times. So we have all the principals at once. Um.
Can the asterisk be made and then? Basically someone coordinate a tour guide for them.
Sure, we can do that too. Yeah.
Go based off their schedule?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking it'd be very difficult to be talking to all five different elementary schools, so if someone could coordinate for.
Yeah, cuz we were talking to Shannon about it. She said that we could all do it separately too, like we can all get to schools and like do it that way, so we're not like super.
And not every elementary has a student forum running student council yet. I know Mount V, they just, I sat in and watched their elections. They just did theirs. Mountain View has one, um.
Does Pioneer have one?
I don't think Pioneer does. Uh neither does George, but. There's still ways that, you know, we could hear from these elementary kids. It's a sampling, you know, you'd hear from some of our elementary students, but that doesn't mean there's. They don't have student voice in other ways, so you know, we could talk with those principals, but maybe just start with two elementaries and middle school. That'd be great. And just have a regular routine of how checking in on those those kiddos. That'd be really powerful, so. Um yeah, let me, you know, as the senior rep, want you and I to connect on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and you're.
Basically a town hall for them.
Yeah, a town hall or a listening session or or you could. And uh I love the elementary student councils because they will, they share some really funny things.
It's like so cute to think of, just like the little, little business people.
Little business. Yeah, they're very serious about their.
A lot to say.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Well, there's no further questions. I guess we can adjourn our meeting for tonight.
I'm sure.
So we can.
Six twenty.